Ok, voy a recordar un poco dónde estamos en el programa. Estamos en la sexta sesión, supongo. La sexta sesión es lo que tenemos. Si tienes el programa está en la página 12. Y ahora estamos comenzando la segunda línea de investigación del Instituto Mundial de la Humanidad. Como recordarás, el lunes nos ocupábamos principalmente de las cuestiones epistemológicas y lingüísticas de la traducción, la imposibilidad de pasar entre lenguas y cómo eso se extiende a todos los sistemas de ciencias y estructuras. Y luego, lo que realmente pasa con la traducción, que es lo que principalmente hicimos el lunes por la tarde, viendo todo tipo de formas creativas de traducción. Y ahora vamos a la segunda línea de investigación, que es lo que tienes desde la página 12 en el programa, en la que vamos a pasar a las conclusiones más éticas y políticas y los desafíos de la traducción. Creo que la charla de Yalaski Sukid ha sido una excelente marcha o límite para pasar de una parte del programa a la siguiente. Creo que también todas las cuestiones de hospitalidad que vamos a estar tratando en las próximas sesiones fueron muy bien exemplificadas por la forma en que ella tomaba las cuestiones. Fui muy impresionado por cómo ella estaba siendo muy hospitable y escuchando en voz alta todas las cuestiones que se presentaron aquí. Fui muy impresionado por eso. Así que creo que, performativamente hablando, tenemos y por las temáticas de desplazamiento y diaspora que ella presentó, ya había establecido y enfocado en esta segunda línea de investigación que tiene que ver con la hospitalidad y la resistencia entre lenguas, literatura y cultura. Así que la pregunta en realidad aquí es cómo pensar sobre los desafíos que la traducción impone cuando se encarga de lenguas o se encarga de comportamientos en lenguas te permite pensar en las cuestiones más amplias de la hospitalidad, la violencia, la hospitalidad limitada y no limitada que vamos a estar tratando. Esta primera sesión es una sesión más introductoria a estos temas. Hay cinco presentaciones. Primero de todo, ambos de nosotros tenemos una presentación, luego tendremos preguntas para 20 minutos y luego habrá las tres presentaciones de Casia, Elena y Patrick que van a pasar aquí y luego tomarás el resto de la sesión con ellos. Voy a empezar luego. Le di un manual, espero que todos tengan una copia, con esta presentación que realmente se considera como una introducción a esta línea de investigación, que me titulé “Violencia, condición y hospitalidad incondicional en testimonios de traductores a través de la historia”. Así que dejando atrás la epistemología negativa enfatizada hasta ahora, una primera determinación importante puede darse a la traducción poética como hospitalidad a los modos de significar el lenguaje extranjero. Como sugirió la sesión inicial, si la tarea del traductor no puede ser imitar o reproducir el significado intacto, debe encargarse de las formas de significación del texto extranjero, los comportamientos. Y aquí hay una forma diferente, pero no menos figurativa o metáforica de ponerlo, pero por Benjamin mismo, es lo que tienes como cita 1 en el manual. Esta función, dice, de encargarse de las formas o los modos de significar consiste en encontrar en el lenguaje objetivo una actitud capaz de despertar en ese lenguaje un eco del original. Porque la traducción da su voz al original, la toma a ese único lugar donde en cada caso el eco es capaz de dar en su propio lenguaje la resonancia de un trabajo en una lengua extranjera. Si empiezo un poco retóricamente, diría que como el ninf eco, el traductor debe dar su voz y responder cuando se habla, pero nunca habla primero. Su voz sirve para hacer que la voz de la gente extranjera sea la de quien ama en silencio. Pero la idea no es que el traductor, como algún ser disminuido, debe ser condenado solo para servir la supuesta superioridad narcisista del original. La traducción se determina más bien como una operación de hospitalidad que responde identificando y abriendo esos lugares donde el propio lenguaje traductor es capaz de encargarse, dando resonancia a los modos de significar el original, el comportamiento del extranjero. Desde este punto de vista, entonces, la pregunta es si el propósito de cruzar de una lengua a otra y de una cultura a otra es capturar y desvanecerlo o abrir un espacio de hospitalidad entre el extranjero y el nativo, o lo que continuamos a llamar al extranjero y al nativo, vamos a preguntar eso. Porque la traducción ha estado muy lejos de cumplirse con este requisito ético básico de hospitalidad hacia los comportamientos del extranjero, en lugar de tomar la forma de una traducción victoriosa. Esto es lo que emerge de una larga y dominante genealogía de defensa de las versiones libres, que en asociación con la maestría imperial se vea tan pronto como el período romano alcanzó algo de un clímax en el siglo XVI y XVII bajo la influencia del clasicismo francés y ha sido perpetrado hasta nuestros propios días bajo algunas nuevas dispensaciones imperiales. De modo que, como todos saben, ya Quintilian escribió: “No intente que la traducción deba ser una paréfrase, sino un contesto y rivalidad con el original para otorgar el mismo significado”. En Roma, la traducción se veó de hecho como un ejercicio militar destinado a la apropiación cultural, en el que los viejos modelos griegos tuvieron su autoridad usurpada y fueron reemplazados por los romanos. Jerome sigue el suelo y reformula el heredaje retórico romano a servicio de la evangelización cristiana. advierte, es lo que tienes como cita 3: “Deja que todos se aprovechen de las palabras y letras, tú vas a seguir las ideas”. El tiempo se acabaría si mencionara a todos aquellos que han traducido a través de su principio. Aquí es suficiente notar a Iladi el Confesor. No se aferró a la dureza de la traducción literal o permitió que se vinculara al literalismo de una cultura inadecuada, pero trajo ideas a su lenguaje después de capturarlas, así que hablar, y asegurándose de ellos con una prerogativa victoriosa. Este uso victorioso, este uso victorioso involucra la búsqueda, captura y reducción del significado o ideas del extranjero. Una nueva batalla en y para la traducción comenzó dentro de la iglesia y esto era dominar durante los medios antes de que finalmente fuera puesto a servicio de los estados modernos. De modo que, como el Imperio español estaba siendo fortalecido por la llamada descubrimiento de América, Nebrija ya estaba pronunciando, estoy citando, que el lenguaje siempre ha sido el socio del imperio. Mientras Juan de Valdés en su “Dialogo de la lengua” del siglo XVI añadió que el lenguaje español se difundiría, cita 4: “El lenguaje español se difundió a muchos pueblos barbaros, es decir, nosotros, y a naciones de lenguas extrañas que necesitaban las leyes que el victor deja para el desvanecer y con ellos nuestro lenguaje”. La reformulación más decisiva de este etnocentrismo en la traducción con su recusación sistémica de encargarse de los modos de significar del extranjero se haría más tarde, sin embargo, a medida que el batall imperial pasaba de España a Francia. Aquí es en las palabras de D’Abelancourt, siglo XVII, el hombre detrás del triunfo de este nuevo modo de traducción, cita 5: “No me aferró siempre a las palabras o a la razonación del autor. Y yo simplemente pienso de todas maneras y estilo con mi objetivo en mente. En diferentes tiempos, el hombre no solo usa palabras diferentes, pero también razones diferentes. Y los embajadores se acostumbran, por miedo a parecer ridículo, a aquellos que tratan de complacerse, a vestirse según la moda del país en el que se envían. Y los ancianos no tradujo de otro modo, como vimos”. Además de continuar en la tradición francesa, el impacto de las ideas y prácticas de los llamados belles infidels se sintió incluso en mucho de Europa. Y a medida que la colonización procedía en el período victoriano, incluso un poeta como Fitzgerald, el renombrado traductor de Omar Hayam Ruayet, que presumía de mostrar al lector cómo otras sociedades con costumbres y usos radicalmente diferentes habían vivido, podía famosamente escribir, probablemente todos conocen esta cita, que es el número 8. “Es divertido para mí tomar lo que me gusta con estas personas que no son poetas lo suficientemente para asustar a alguien de esas excursiones y que realmente quieren un poco de arte para formarlos”. Ahora, si para cerrar esta examinación de lo que ha desviado la traducción literaria de su verdadera deber ético de hospitalidad cuando pasa de la historia a la análisis o a la síntesis, es posible señalar al menos tres tendencias bastante estrechamente vinculadas. La primera y más obvia es la tendencia hacia el imperialismo político y el etnocentrismo ideológico. La segunda, hay el hipertextualismo literario. Lejos de consultar la materialidad y el comportamiento del lenguaje extranjero y los modos de significar del autor, el traductor impone un imitativo general o inventivo adaptativo involucrando una serie de severas deformaciones. Tercer, encontramos el platonismo filósofico e intencionalidad. Si el significado se percibe como una idealidad transcendental garantizando unidad que no depende de la forma, su aprehensión no se considera el resultado de receptividad hacia lo impredecible, sino de una voluntad intencional, anticipación y adecuación. Ahora, si avanzamos, cuando se trata de trazar una alternativa histórica y una crítica de la concepción etnocéntrica y triunfalista de la traducción, la genealogía vuelve a llevarse de nuevo a la antigüedad, donde uno ya encuentra una defensa de la fidelidad literal, aunque condicional en un absoluto respeto por lo que se cree que es una palabra divina. Es decir, por lo que creo que es texto escrito por un dios o por algunos de estos amaneceres, espíritus santos y demás. Sin embargo, si uno está buscando identificar una tradición de gran escala promoviendo la hospitalidad hacia el extranjero en la historia, en un entorno secular, uno necesita comenzar con un pensamiento fundamental que emerge en el contexto del clasicismo y el romanticismo alemán, aunque esta hospitalidad fue principalmente actuada en ese momento por consideraciones de interés propio de la nación. Es decir, aunque la traducción fue considerada como una forma limitada y no una forma absoluta de hospitalidad. Esto es lo que es postulado por muchos autores. Voy a leer la que tienes de Humboldt en la página 3, la cita 15. Humboldt escribe: “La traducción, especialmente de poetas, es una de las tareas más urgentes de la literatura, un proceso por el cual cada nación obtiene un beneficio, especialmente para aumentar la significancia y expresividad del lenguaje nativo”. Y a medida que la mente del lenguaje se amplía, también la mente de toda la nación. Solo para dar un ejemplo, piense en cómo la imitación de los metros griegos ha enrichido el lenguaje alemán y de los muchos desarrollos maravillosos que se han llevado a cabo en el pueblo alemán. Si todas las lenguas pueden transformarse infinitamente recibiendo formas extranjeras, dos actitudes decisivas comienzan a tomar forma en este nuevo enfoque de la traducción, actitudes que en cambio determinan los límites de la hospitalidad para las formas extranjeras y el comportamiento del extranjero de tal manera. En primer lugar, la fidelidad emerge como una fuerte literariedad. La traducción introduce nuevas formas de expresión y particularmente nuevas formas poéticas de significación que aumentan la capacidad del lenguaje concernido y, por lo tanto, expanden los límites de la literatura, la cultura y la nación de su visión global del orador. Por eso, en segundo lugar, esta promesa de ampliación del lenguaje nativo se concebe como una educación o entrenamiento de la cultura nacional a través del extranjero. De acuerdo con ello, el bienestar no es irrestricto y condicional, sino más bien condicional sobre el beneficio nativo derivado, de modo que la hospitalidad se extiende a formas y comportamientos dentro de ciertos límites de una manera limitada. Es como la inmigración elegida, una inmigración que básicamente se hace por el beneficio de la nación nativa. No es derecho de asilo. Ahora, para avanzar y terminar, comencemos a ver una voluntad de dejar las restricciones atrás y ofrecer una hospitalidad ilimitada, incondicional, en algo como Panwitz, que famosamente escribe, cita 21 en la página 4. O las traducciones, dice, incluso las mejores proceden de un error de fundamento. Quieren germanizar a la India, el griego, el inglés en lugar de indizigar, grezigar y anglicigar al alemán. Tienen un respeto mucho más significativo por su propio uso lingüístico que por el espíritu del trabajo extranjero. El error fundamental del traductor es que se aferra rápido al estadio incidental de su propio lenguaje en lugar de dejarlo ser violentamente movido por el extranjero. Especialmente cuando traduce de un lenguaje muy remoto de su propio, debe volver a los elementos primarios del lenguaje mismo y penetrar al punto donde el trabajo, la imagen y el tono convergen. Debe expandirse y profundizar su lenguaje a través del lenguaje extranjero y uno realmente no se da cuenta de cuál es el grado en que esto es posible. Lo que Panwitz está anunciando aquí es una hospitalidad incondicional, ya que declina su subordinación al bienestar dado al lenguaje extranjero y lo que puede decir al extranjero de tal manera, a las calculaciones y beneficios del nativo. No es posible, dice, anticipar los efectos del llegamiento del extranjero, incluso en el riesgo de violencia hacia lo que continuamos a llamar al nativo. Esto es lo que Benjamin llamará traducción de la letra, donde la fidelidad a los modos de significar del extranjero genera un movimiento de libertad en el nativo. La tarea no se presenta más como una salida hacia el extranjero cuyo objetivo es acceder al nativo, sino como un liberio o redención, la palabra que Benjamin utiliza es “erleuzen”, un tipo de derecho de asilo, más precisamente como una liberación del lenguaje encarcelado en el trabajo extranjero que gana acceso a su libertad en el país nativo. Es en este sentido que Benjamin está consciente de que está proclamando una operación, esto es cita 23, en la que un nuevo y mayor derecho de libertad se reafirma en traducción. Su valor no deriva del significado del mensaje, ya que la misión de la fidelidad es emanciparla. La libertad se convierte en patente en el lenguaje nativo. Así que esta no es la libertad de la traducción violenta e intencional, estamos hablando al principio de hoy, sino la libertad de aquello que la encarga desvanece una significación incontrollable en este área del nativo. Ahora, para terminar, déjame de nuevo pasar de la historia a la síntesis y especificar al menos dos actitudes reconocibles de esta hospitalidad entre lenguas. Porque ya estuvieron patentes el lunes en las sesiones sobre la traducción creativa, donde vimos cómo encargarse de diferentes formas poéticas de significar, las mismas actitudes básicas son capaces en cambio de proporcionar una base para un enfoque más general a la hospitalidad y transferencia, capaces de establecer los prerequisitos básicos para un bienestar más general entre las culturas y los poblados habitantes de las lenguas. De modo que, en primer lugar, a medida que la atención se centra en el esfuerzo activo para encargarse de las formas poéticas de significar, lo que uno reconoce en traducción hospitable es la ausencia de un método fijo de resolución universal, de un procedimiento con reglas programáticas para cada tipo de transferencia donde el nativo y el extranjero están involucrados. En otras palabras, mientras las decisiones nunca pueden ser retrasadas cuando se le pide hospitalidad, no hay una forma y no hay una forma perfecta de hacerlo. Las decisiones transferiales siempre son adoptadas y deben responder a la especificidad de cada caso con el conocimiento de que tratar poco con un requisito significa neglectar otros, que cada decisión abre y cierra a otros y que no hay un precio que uno tiene que estar dispuesto a pagar cuando se encarga de un lenguaje extranjero. Uno no puede pensar que uno va a tener como una metodología, una metodología perfecta que te permita tomar decisiones. Las decisiones siempre están cerradas y abiertas y tienes que estar dispuesto a aceptar el riesgo de eso. Entonces, en segundo lugar, enfocarse en la posibilidad y el resultado de esta hospitalidad para las formas poéticas de significar lleva a la realización de la necesidad de una receptividad no intencional a los efectos incontrollables del llegamiento del extranjero en el nativo. Una hospitalidad lista en todo momento para aceptar lo que pueda superar el planificación, la proyección o la anticipación intencional. Esto es lo que se denomina característica de la resonancia de la traducción poética, el hecho de que el trabajo original está siendo refractado contra un lenguaje en particular en una parte particular de su historia y estableciendo eco impredecible que va más allá de cualquier significación que podría haber sido anticipada por intención, que podría ser atribuida al traductor o de hecho incluso a la intencionalidad subjetiva del autor original. Muchas gracias. Así que ahora nos quedamos con ustedes Alejandro Valenzuela, que va a hablar sobre Figurín de la Oba, el ensayo español-americano y su confrontación con la modernidad.
Ok, ¿me escuchas bien? Sí. Ok, voy a empezar a leer. “El tema de la Oba, la Oba escrita con una letra mayúscula, es la que tiene autoridad simbólica, es uno de los principales temas del ensayo literario hispanoamericano moderno. Nuestro espacio de escritura moderno emergió a finales del siglo XIX como resultado directo de la gradual pérdida de normatividad sufrida por el programa civilizante que hasta entonces había guiado la empresicia modernizada que se llevó adelante por la mayoría de nuestras repúblicas jóvenes y el traslado consecutivo de esa normatividad hacia la extrema esfera moderna de la cultura. Este proceso, descrito con skill por Terry Egleton para el caso de Europa como una explosión de las contradicciones internas de la modernidad, contuvo entre nosotros el nacimiento de una nueva forma discursiva que me gustaría representar aquí como una moderna crítica de la modernidad. Esta nueva forma discursiva formó el ensayo literario completo escrito en el período abierto por él. La crítica cultural de la modernidad llevó con sí varios desafíos. Uno de los mayores fue imaginar la relación entre uno mismo y el extranjero, entre nosotros latinos y el espacio global de la modernidad. El programa civilizante nos ofreció solo una alternativa, la modernidad o el barbarismo. Confrontando esto, la tarea que nuestro programa cultural moderno se puso sobre sí mismo fue ampliar este espectro de posiciones, formular nuevas estrategias de entrada en la modernidad que podrían simultáneamente trabajar para los latinos como nuevas posibilidades de convertirse en parte del orden global. Nuestro ensayo literario moderno imaginó cuatro estrategias de entrada. Esta es al menos mi hipótesis. En lo que sigue, intentaré explicarlos al enumerar las figuras que crearon para re reflexionar críticamente la relación entre los dominios de uno mismo y el extranjero. La primera y más influyente de las representaciones introducidas por nuestros essayistas como parte del programa cultural desarrollando una posición moderna para los latinos fue la conocida R América, coinvocada por el cubano escritor José Martí. El adjetivo posesivo R que define esta representación se suponía emitir en primer lugar una declaración de propiedad en frente de una amenaza doble representada entonces por el avance imperialista de América del Norte sobre la región y la violenta fuerza de desterritralización moderna. Al mismo tiempo, buscaba establecer para los latinos una tarea que se consideraba por Martí en ese momento como siendo de la más importante, la necesidad de poner en movimiento un proceso de apropiación. Lo que en sí mismo dictó el programa de Martí o América tenía que convertirse en su propio, en nuestro. Las condiciones en las que nuestra existencia se construyó tenían que convertirse en una realidad aprehendida, es decir, en una realidad fundada en la realidad de nuestra conciencia. Solo a través de medios de apropiación de lo nuestro podíamos lograr poseernos en la forma de una propiedad antontológica sancionada. Cito: “Ninguno puede ajustar la originalidad literaria ni la libertad política prevalecerá”, escribió Martí en 1882, “siempre que la libertad espiritual no haya sido segura. La primera tarea del hombre es reconquistarse. Es urgente devolver al hombre a sí mismo”. End of the quote. Este proyecto de regresar a uno mismo, habiendo originado en la turbulenta confrontación del cubano con la modernidad de Nueva York y siendo estrechamente conectado, como muestran estas líneas claramente, al entorno defensivo de un dominio espiritual o el reino de uno mismo, es la base de la estrategia de entrada en la modernidad desarrollada por el programa de R América. Al cambiar los dos conceptos por el escritor martiniqua Édouard Glisson, diría que lo que pretendía el programa de Martí no era nada más que transformar nuestra tierra en territorio. La territorialización consiste en escribir en la tierra, en lo que es, demarcarlo o darle una figura clara para precisamente dibujar la línea de uno mismo como una línea pura de una cultura. Trazar límites es la pasión que inspira el programa de R América. Aquí el interior, allí el exterior. Aquí los fieles, allí los traidores. Aquí lo natural, allí lo artificial. Aquí es el buen uso del lenguaje que sirve al costo de los latinos y allí el mal uso para ser censurado. Al territorializar nuestra tierra, Martí la quería, y debemos prestar atención aquí a los tonos metafísicos de la proposición, para convertirla en una fundación, una garantía ontológica. Su proyecto cultural establecido e incluso predicho que solo sociedades se acercan a un territorio o lo que se considera lo mismo, fundado en su propia verdad, podrían lograr inscribirse en el espacio global abierto por la modernidad sin perderse en su camino allí. Fuera de nuestra tierra, nosotros latinos no teníamos la menor oportunidad de asegurar la continuidad de nuestra existencia. Viviendo en exilio, pintando en nubes, escribió Martí una vez en sus cuadernos, o notebooks. La figura del árbol, frecuentemente utilizado por Martí, representa la más significativa y conclusiva síntesis del proyecto cultural que hasta ahora he estado tratando de explicar. Cita: “Deja que el mundo sea basado en nuestra república”, escribió en un famoso pasaje de su ensayo R América, “pero el tronco debe ser el de nuestras propias repúblicas”. End of the quote. El árbol de Martí, explícitamente abierto al mundo para recibir las ricas contribuciones de la influencia extranjera, demuestra que el programa de R América pretendía menos cerrar el perímetro de la región que claramente establecer las condiciones bajo las que cada encuentro futuro con la Oba tendría lugar. No quería promover una eradicación de la relación, sino más bien la construcción crítica de una escena de diálogo renovada. Una escena que, y aquí llegamos al núcleo de la estrategia de Martí, nos protegería en advance del otro al establecer límites estrictos a su intervención y simultáneamente asignando el lugar y función indiscutido del tronco a uno mismo. El árbol de Martí expresa la proposición metafísica que circula a través de todo el programa de R América, la creencia de que la relación siempre llega tarde una vez que el自has ya sido desarrollado. Es decir, que la Oba nunca es un principio constituyente, sino un complemento que solo inscribe o se basa posteriori en el espacio de uno mismo y siempre bajo sus condiciones de entrada preestablecidas. Es por repetir las líneas de esta lógica similar al árbol que Martí responderá la pregunta crucial respecto al lenguaje que Dante o Shakespeare tendría que exhibir en la futura Dante. Debe ser un lenguaje, y aquí cito, “que de la propia lengua madre recibe el molde, y de las lenguas que hoy influencian a América, el influxo necesario, con suficientes criterios para rechazar aquello que no adapta a los traits esenciales de nuestra lengua madre, hermosa y por lo tanto poderosa debido a su estructura sólida, para ejercer después del potro de hielo lingüístico, en español “agrisolamiento”, dominio absoluto”. End of the quote. Como se puede ver, el argumento usado aquí por Martí es exactamente el mismo que el presentado antes. La Oba o la lengua de la Oba será aceptada solo si se concuerda con el tronco de la lengua española, solo si se concuerda con su dominio futuro incontestable. La Oba deja de ser una contribución al programa de R América una vez que comienza a alterar la unidad esencial de lo nuestro. Esta forma de aceptación condicional o hospitalidad que siempre se centra en la integridad de uno mismo es el atributo principal de la comprensión de Martí de nuestra relación con el extranjero. La cultura juega aquí principalmente un papel defensivo y solo después, secundariamente, uno de comunicación. La asociación de Martí de los conceptos de cultura y resistencia, sin embargo, se discutirá pronto o al menos se balanceará con la atención que un grupo de escritores humanistas dieron a lo que el mexicano Alfonso Reyes concebía como la función unificadora de la cultura. El principal trato de esta línea dentro del ensayo hispanoamericano moderno no será más el trazo de límites, sino su espíritu de reconciliación, un tipo específico de hospitalidad, a veces llamado el humanismo universal moderno de América Latina. Y cito a Reyes: “Tomar nota es lo peor que podemos hacer. Adivirta todo y trate de reconciliarlo. Dentro del potro de la historia, el Cristo de la historia, se está preparando una herencia incalculable para América Latina, pero sucederá bajo la condición de ser vigilante, de tomar ventaja y de proteger todas las conquistas. Lo que saldrá de ello no será noroeste ni occidental, sino que será ampliamente y completamente humano”. End of the quote. Lo que primero llama la atención cuando se compara este pasaje con el programa de R América es la notoria disminución de la atención entre uno mismo y el extranjero que resultó del privilegio asignado al reino universal del humano sobre cualquier diferencia específica por la posición humanista. El hombre de letras latinoamericano como humanista está idealmente retratado aquí menos como el sentimiento vigilante de Martí de lo que nos pertenece que como un tipo de guardián comprometido, un guardián debido a ser el que tiene la responsabilidad de la protección, de cuidar, de cultivar. Un custodiano que tendría la tarea de preservar ese tesoro que viene de toda la humanidad que los humanistas llaman cultura y a la que cada humano, por el simple hecho de ser humano, debería sentirse intimamente relacionado. should feel intimately related. In this sense, what is one's own for Reyes in Latin America's cultural creations would not be their faithfulness or proximity to the land, but their proverbial openness and universality which includes and transcends the local level. In other words, their ever-present impulse towards a universal medium of production located beyond any particular difference. Our art would be a humanist art because it would refuse to be a narrow art, an art determined exclusively by wine tradition or presenting itself as an expression of only one phase of the human experience. This defense of openness held from the sphere of culture is inseparable from the humanist critique of the shrinking of the human that followed the arrival of modernity to the region and the establishment of its new life horizon. The humanist turned the defense of culture into a defense of man, the classical or Greco-Latin idea of man, in the face of modernity. Their cultural classicism was presented as a modern critique of modernity. This allowed them to consider the dispute over culture as a dispute over the idea of man, that is, to present a plea on behalf of what the Uruguayan essayist José Enrique Rollo, the earliest leading figure of Latin America's modern humanism, emphatically called "the rights of the spirit", subscribing thus at a local level to the modern topic of the crisis of culture as a crisis of men. If the writers that supported the program of "Our America" had considered culture as a space where a critical negotiation between one's own and the foreign takes place, the humanist saw in it something larger, maybe more decisive, something that presented or seemed to present itself on a different level, a battle that was being fought on behalf of the continuity of men in history and in which they thought Latin America had a central and active role to play. In other words, that which needed to resist was neither the local nor one's own, but the widest, the only thing that could secure that communication will continue between modern men: the idea of man. As Octavio Paz reminds us several times, the modern conception of culture is determined by a polemical and contradictory relationship between culture and modernity, and the humanist interpretation of that dispute is only one of many. The humanist position gave the man of letters a specific function or responsibility: that of guaranteeing the continuity of culture. This task in a position to Martí's tree finds its clear expression in the figure of the river that was used by Reyes in order to represent the place that Latin Americans needed to recognize as their own inside the space of history. And I quote: "The Mexican spirit," he wrote, meaning by it all Latin Americans, "is in the color that Latin water took once it got here to our home, after running for three centuries along the red clay of our soil." End of the quote. The strategy of entry into modernity that humanists offered us is based on the sheltering of this classical tradition, in the tools this tradition makes available for us, hares to its forms, to critically face a myriad of cats and impoverishing impositions that the modern empire of technique or its debasing utilitarianism want to present to us as a higher or more valid social form. For Latin America's humanists, the best political culture rests not in the figure of the tree, but in that of the river. Only tradition, as it was established back then by them, could truly guarantee our continuity on the long run and, along with it, that of man. The relationship can never come too late for them because relationship is essentially what we do or what we are, in the sense, of course, that humanists gave to the word. That is, a relationship as being something always established against the shared and common background of that which is human. The third line of the Hispanic-American essay that I'll be exploring here introduces an inflection in the humanist position that at the same time emphasizes and transforms the premises on which it had been developed. In the work of the Mexican José Vaz Concelos, its strongest and certainly most extreme enactment, the image of Latin America as the land of hospitality that humanists had cautiously presented under the form of an ethical task or an ideal normative horizon was quasi-theologically reworked in the hands of an omnivorous cultural program that did not hesitate to present that image as a mission or the historical destiny that we Ibero-americans carried on our shoulders. And I quote: "the great enterprise of giving birth to the universal era of humanity." End of quote. According to Vaz Concelos, we were the ones in charge of finally solving the human question. In this sense, this program was less a humanist critique of modernity than an attempt to go beyond it, to overcome it. In other words, Vaz Concelos' narrative proclaimed that the principle of miscegenation, metisaje in Spanish, that defines us did not only put us in a privileged position to defend the unity and integrity of man, but that it actually located us in utmost proximity to the tellers of history, to what he regarded as its internal and necessary unfolding. Through hospitality, we would once and for all surpass the inherent narrowness expressed by every civilization prior to us in history. And I quote him: "The advantage of our tradition consists of its natural sympathy towards strangers. This entails that our civilization, with all its shortcomings, might be the chosen one to assimilate and convert all men to a new type. In it, the plot, the rich and multiple plasma feature humanity, is being prepared." End of quote. For Vaz Concelos, the cultural politics of Martí's tree wasn't what was to regulate our relationship with the Other, but the fact that we were or that we had to consider ourselves as the womb of the man to come. Vaz Concelos' program dangerously pushed the humanist discourse up to the extreme point of making possible for it to deliver lessons on humanity. Our hospitality, he thought, made us more open, more humane than those civilizations that had established their dominion in history based on the violent rule of a single race or tradition. This argument unintentionally performed what might be the imperial gesture by excellence, that of considering oneself a privileged form of humanity and to build thereupon a position of power. The paradox of Vaz Concelos' program consists of its inverted repetition of the position he thought he would overcome, of all the imperial strategies of exclusion he had condemned throughout his writings. From my point of view, the strange conceptual image that would best present his program would be the one of an empire of inclusion. Vaz Concelos turned the humanist utopia into an imperial dystopia and constructed from the idea of openness an ominous form of confinement. He established a new monological horizon called "One World", that was presented by him under the guise of the violent rhetoric of an end to violence. His imperial position paradoxically affirmed the necessity of waging, and I quote, "a war against any type of violent imposition." End of quote. Only the fourth line of our literary modern essay would develop a genre of cultural program consistently defined, but what I understand, as a politics of limitless hospitality. In this line, as I'll try to show now, we'll see neither the military metaphors displayed by Martí's cultural politics of resistance or Vaz Concelos' all-encompassing imperialism, nor the respectful custody of the human treasure of culture that was assumed by the humanist position. We'll see here neither defense nor overcoming non-conservation. The core of the cultural program developed by this fourth group of essayists is a radical principle of expression, that is, of reduction of difference. The works I'll be exploring here are those of the Cuban writer José Lesama Lima and the Argentine Jorge Luis Borges. They both establish what could be thought of in delusion terms as a movement away from the traditional war of identity towards the construction of a Latin American war machine. Lesama posited for the first time in 1957 the image of the Gnostic space, a figure coined by him in order to express the symbolic regime of reduction that regulates the relationship between Latin America and the Other. Seen through the lens of this figure, Latin America appears as a land, and I quote, "that expected a kind of vegetative fecundation, for grace to bring about the temperature required for the reception of the generative particles", in Spanish, "corpuculo generatrices." End of quote. What my surprise here is Lesama's deliberate use of passive metaphors. As opposed to Martí's tree, our land is represented in this passage as a surface readily available to be joyously fecundated, exhibited in an attitude of expectation that seems to completely disregard Martí's metaphysical structure of limited reception. The Other as an original drafting, this is what the figure of the Gnostic space names in the first place. According to the logic underlying this figure, the first cultural operation would consist of radically opening oneself to be cultivated, fecundated, visited. But if you cannot anticipate what the Other will do with us, neither can he foresee in which unknown ways will our actions inform him. This is another attribute of the Gnostic space, the absolute privilege it gives to the encounter. Lesama's relational space never confirms the identities of those who enter it. He thought of it as a place where something else could take place. "In our hands," thinks Lesama, "tradition never ceases to shift, to engender unexpected possibilities, to produce effects that are by definition beyond anyone's control." What Lesama sees as the, and I quote, "receiving power of what is ours", in Spanish, "la potencia recipientaria de lo nuestro", is not a power of reproduction that would limit itself to the idea of confirming the Other, but an immense power of production that makes of us a unique site for the creation of difference. In the end, Lesama imagined Latin America as an enormous echo chamber where the whole world could begin to resonate and experience unpredictable processes of difference or repetition, an open fertile soil that offers the Other the opportunity to have a creative afterlife, the always surprising return of dead forms, in Lesama's own words, "a land of resurrection". Borges also practiced this kind of non-superstitious rewriting of the Other's words. His cultural program consciously moved away from the principle of ontological fidelity, that is, the imperative of expressing things as they are or as they claim to be, in order to reframe our relationships according to a new practical contract. As he famously stated, "It is in the free handling of the West's tradition that Latin American writers will find the more advantageous writing scene for them." Borges inherited the universalist paradigm of Reyes, his "let's adopt it all" position. But he did so not without amping it of the humanist ethic that obliged the Latin American writer to behave respectfully towards tradition, affirming thus its human compromise with the destiny of culture. Against the metaphysical demands of fidelity that had been established by the three other lines of our modern essay, the fidelities to the land, to man, and to history, Borges' free handling of tradition was a practice based on what I understand as a cultural politics of the encounter that strives to leave behind any colonial or ontological compromises or, to put it in Borges's own words, "any forms of superstition or devotion that could hinder a priori the proper or improper power of Latin American writing." Borges's cultural program fostered an experimental practice aimed mainly towards the production of effects, and I quote him: "I believe our tradition is all of Western culture, and I also believe we have rights to this tradition. Anything we Argentine writers do successfully, and the word in Spanish here is "con felicidad", will become part of our tradition." This "felicidad", and I'd like to keep the Spanish word here, as a new criterion to evaluate the scope of action of the Argentine or Latin American culture, introduces a logic that from the beginning suspends any concept of limitation or historical destination, any kind of ontological cutback decreed beforehand. It's what we actually do, the results of our creative practices, that will establish in the end the limits of what our culture or tradition is, what we may or may not do, and not the other way around. A successful joyful encounter will be for Borges any encounter that, as Espinoza would say, "increases our potency", that is, any encounter that produces creative effects, effects of difference, thereby charging forms and materials with a new intensity. This is the only limit that Borges and Lesama set for Latin America's culture, the range of its own power of variation. Culturally speaking, both behaviors war machines, both held the position of nomadic bodies. Their experimental writing opened up a space where it was possible to free us from the closed circle of the conditions of existence. They profoundly disturbed or unsettled the concept of place, that fence that separates here and there, that distributes functions, powers and capacities, centers and peripheries, radically embracing the world as a continuum and the practice of irreverent roaming as a new cultural possibility, which famously made Borges compare us with the Jewish and Irish people. This continuum was not the utopian creation of a universal space freed from all frictions or differences, but of a relational space where limits are constantly being overstepped and redefined. It was less a utopian conception of cultural relationships than an atypical one. As Beatriz Sallo once said, Borges was, I quote, "a marginal writer at the center and a cosmopolitan at the margins." End of quote. It is precisely this locus of enunciation what I believe to be the main trait of this fourth line of our modern essay: the construction of an unstable, untamed-in-between, an inside-outside position that is as proper as it is improper, as foreign as it is native, a cultural practice oriented towards the production of difference that joyfully manages to escape the temptations of residence or identity. Thank you.
So, we'll now take questions for about 10, 15 minutes maximum, and then we'll move to the second part of the session. So, any questions?
Hi.
Hi, I'm thinking about translation and unconditional hospitality in terms of like the power differential between languages. So, for example, it's like kind of different to think about English being unconditionally hospitable to Hindi versus Hindi being unconditionally hospitable to English, where English has like a global and cultural capital within India. And likewise, I'm thinking about within India, there's a difference between Hindi being unconditionally hospitable to a regional language versus a regional language being unconditionally hospitable to Hindi, where Hindi is being like imposed on the regional languages. So, the unconditional hospitality could be seen as like a way to reinforce the imposition of the language.
Yeah, I think obviously in asymmetric power relationships, what might be seen by the conqueror as hospitality might just be invasion. So, unconditional hospitality doesn't mean that, I mean, in those asymmetric power relationships, I would have to, you have to see the exact case to know if it's hospitality or it's invasion. It's just like eruption more than hospitality. Having said that, and I think I didn't stress that too much, but I don't think there is hospitality without violence. I think it would be naive to think that you can receive someone and be hospitable without doing violence to yourself and to the one that is arriving. And that's why I stress in a moment in the presentation, that I think that decisions are never, they never discharge you of the debt that you have as being a host. Decisions are always partial, and that's why translation teaches us so much about hospitality, in the sense that when you receive a formal behaviour in a foreign language, and also has to do with the historical state of your language, you are most of the time not able to do everything that you would want your language to do, I mean, to host all the behaviour that it should host. And at the same time, even the behaviours you find yourself able to hosting produce effects, among other semantic effects, which are unpredictable. And all that creates a certain violence, and a certain violence that you have to mediate, and in which you have also, I didn't stress that part, but you have also to consider the violence you're doing to the native, because you're also responsible for the rest of the people that in, I mean, these categories of the native and the foreign, obviously we should question them, but if I stick to them for the time being, what I try to say is that there's no hospitality without violences, and there's no hospitality without decision. And that decision normally implies how much violence do you want to do to yourself and to the foreign, and you have to negotiate that all the time. So, there's no perfect way of doing it, but at the same time, there's no way of avoiding taking immediate decisions. So, I have my doubts that you can just convert from the point of view that you're looking to hospitality and invasion. I think there are things you can recognise as invention from whatever point of view you take. So, it's not that the reverse of hospitality is invention, no, sorry, invasion. Invasion is a form of translation, as it is a form of relation between cultures and between the foreign and the native, and hospitality is a different form. But both have their own violences, which are different. That's the way I would put it, at least as an hypothesis.
Regarding maybe the same question, just a minor thing. For example, regarding the topic of violence, I think about Martí, for example. He felt he had to establish some sort of cultural defence against North America's imperialist advance, you know? But trying to establish this defence, he created an incredible amount of internal violence when he started separating Latin Americans between the traitors and the faithful ones, you know? So, fighting against violence produces a secondary system of violence. So, yeah, it's true, you can't escape violence, I mean, it's everywhere. So, that's an important thing.
A very good example is, maybe because it's more familiar to all of you, like your last example in Borges, I mean, Borges, who is a writer that we all love, but he's like the epitome of translation in a way. I mean, he creates this kind of universal movement of translation, he's not limited as previous Argentinian Romantic movement. There's a very interesting thing in Argentina, is that the Romantic movement, when they want to find independence from Spain, they decide to contaminate the Spanish language from all other European languages. Borges extends, I mean, in that genealogy, Borges extends that to universal, I mean, he also has his relation with the Orient, and he has this universal movement of translation. But at the same time, that movement of translation creates exclusion. I mean, in all this genealogy of Argentinian tradition, the actual languages of the immigrants, the actual immigrants in Argentina, which is massive, are excluded, is the literary European languages that are working there. The pre-Hispanic languages and culture are completely excluded. Actually, the way Borges creates an Argentinian past is through a language of the future. I mean, he creates his own past, I mean, as an author. I'm not trying to criticise Borges, I'm just saying that it's difficult, even if you have this kind of universal movement of translation as Borges has, it creates its own violences, because there are decisions taken in the middle.
I think a question would go for both of you. First, I wanted to understand a bit if it's interchangeable to say poetic ways of meaning and poetic ways of signifying. I don't know if, it doesn't seem, at least in English, maybe in Spanish it sounds a bit different, but in English it doesn't seem like there's a very clear frontier. And the second thing that would be more related to both of them, to the otherness, for example, is that poetic way of signifying, let's say, or meaning, it's different, right? Because it's different for the person who translates as well as for the person who writes the poem. I'm not, let's say, from the area of poetry where there's an intentionality behind the text, like there's a purpose for the text, but it seems to me that the poetic ways of meaning is not a universal. So, the translator as the writer don't necessarily have the same poetical ways of meaning, I would assume. But is that also related to an assessment in the sense that recognising that otherness is also assessing, I don't know how to put this, maybe in Spanish I can do it better. No, just answer the first questions. Maybe it was clearer in my mind and now it's not.
Maybe you can ask in Spanish and we can try to answer.
But I will try to make it clearer in both languages and then I'll ask, yes, thank you.
It might be nice to have some Spanish. Well, the first question, I've been using interchangeably. I could, I have a system, so I could differentiate between meaning and signification, more than significance. But I've been using interchangeably the poetic ways of meaning, poetic ways of signifying, behaviours of language, they have been used interchangeably, although I could separate them, but I've not done it today. In terms of the intentionality, I think, I would say two things. It's like convention on arbitrariness, which are different things. Intentionality is always there, but that doesn't mean that it controls the whole movement of meaning. So, for me, it would be very naive to think there's no intentionality, but at the same time, so you have to, and when I read, I normally ask myself what the author wanted to say, but that doesn't mean that that's always happening, because this linguistic text, this artefact, is being put in context, it creates meaning by itself. We were yesterday in the Museo de la Memoria, I mean, if you speak about Pinocchio in Italy, it's not the same thing about speaking about Pinot in Chile, because it creates immediate resonance. I've done an expert conference on Colonia in Chile in the eighties, it would have been obviously very subversive. So, that's what I mean, intentionality is there, but at the same time, context activates a lot of meaning. And then, yeah, you were talking about the ways of meaning and being limited to certain languages. Obviously, different languages have different resources of meaning, some of them are easy to produce. I was speaking the other day that images in general translate easily. So, even if you have a new way of using images, in general, it's quite easy to recreate it in a new language, be it dynamic images or discrete images. But contextual effect is much more difficult, because you have those forms of ways of meaning, you have to recreate something that is functional to the new context to activate the meaning. And then musical effect, I'm speaking about this poetic choice, musical effect, you have to resemanticise the sounds of the new language in a way that are, that they are functional to reproduce the kinds of effect, but most of the times won't be with the same sounds. Let's say I wanted to translate Anglo-Saxon poetry into Spanish, actually Borges tried to do that once, and in Spanish we have all these polylabals with very soft consonants, we have a more allegato sound. So, it's very difficult to find polylabals that would have that consonant, strong beat to translate Anglo-Saxon poetry. So, probably you'll have to find a different way of having this distics with two accents than through alliteration, for instance. So, the ways of meaning are not shared, but you can try to do a different language that has different forms of meaning, semanticise its sounds, for instance, or all the ways of meaning, in a way that answer or echo, as we would put it, the ways another language had semantisised its sounds, but it might not be the same sounds in the same places. I think we might maybe have, we will take two questions, just two questions, and then we'll move forward. Sorry, there was one here, no. Okay, why don't we take the three questions, and Matthew, and then there were two questions here, yeah. Matthew?
So, actually, Matthew and I are sort of asking a question together. So, I'll ask the first part very briefly. So, I think what I'm really struck by is this sort of maxim that there's no hospitality without violence, and it strikes me that this language of violence, power, and invasion as it manifests in the sort of genealogy that you offered in your handout, Andres, feels very gendered to me. It feels very male-centric, and I wonder how the language and metaphors of translation change over time when we account for women, people of colour, in this genealogy. And then I'm going to pass it on to Matthew.
Yeah, and just the observation I had to add to that is that the sort of the translation tradition in the nineteenth century that corresponds to the theorisations you're presenting, certainly in the UK, so firstly, if you think of someone like Madame de Stahl writing in the eighteen twenties, she configures this as a very, you know, particularly German nationalist thing. Then the way it gets into the UK is through Thomas Carlyle, Robert Browning, and through into Ezra Pound. And at the same time, women translators are writing, but they're not adopting this, these modes of translation, and they're not adopting this rhetoric. So, people like Elizabeth Barrett Browning, Augusta Webster, the figure whose pen name was Michael Thield, but that is a pen name for two women poets, Catherine Bradley and Edith Cooper. And even there's a kind of sort of heteronormativity about it as well, really. So, Fitzgerald, who you mentioned, is queer, and he says that very imperialist thing about the writer he's translating, but that's partly a way of distancing himself from the norms of his own culture. It's a very entangled rhetoric, he's engaged in that. And decadent poets, again, don't adopt, so this is just a way of kind of adding some historical context to Adriana's question. So, is it, how much is it a gendered discourse, basically?
Yeah, I think, I mean, you're right, in the sense, but that genealogy, which obviously stressed years some moments, takes like not first instances, but paradigmatic texts that were influential. And I think that, yeah, it is a male gender, it is a male genealogy, I completely agree with it. On the other side, I would have difficulties, I mean, if you take Madame de Stahl, for instance, she's quite near to the Romantic German tradition in the ways she's, I mean, he has this idea of building your own language through the importation of foreign forms. And I didn't put Madame de Stahl, because she was, in a way, taking the ideas, as I said, I didn't put Carlyle, because they were taking the ideas from the Germans and translating into the Rome culture. I didn't put Victor Hugo, who also was translating lots of Germans' ideas into the Romantic French tradition. So, I tried to focus on like initial instances, although that's problematic as a concept. But Madame de Stahl has ideas that are quite similar to this Schleier-Macher-Herder-Humboldt tradition of building the native through the passage, through the foreign, and in that way, I don't think that this, I mean, and I, in a way return you the question, I don't think there's a big difference, gender difference, in the ways these things are treated. I think that would be, I wouldn't, at least for what I know, I mean, and probably you know much more texts, more recent texts, and maybe in recent texts it's different, but in that history, if you think of even Browning, I see similar ideas in the text written by someone like Madame de Stahl, or text written by, let's say, Carlyle, or Schleier-Macher, or Humboldt. So, that's, but again, I mean, if you think that there is a difference by the fact that these texts were written, I mean, there is a difference, but there's a difference in terms of the ideas about hospitality and how the native relates to the foreign, by the fact that they were women, I would be glad to hear, but I've not seen that difference in the texts I know of the time, of the Romantic period.
Yeah, I do think there's a difference, but it's not, I'm not going to take up more time elaborating.
Maybe a last question, and then we'll, yes?
Thank you very much for your very interesting presentations. My question is for Alejandro. Could your argument be placed for Borges at all in context of his story El otro and the illusory self, that is, the place of unreliable memory and cultural appropriation in creating the self as against the other? And also, could we read this as a deferral of the otherness within the self? I hope that's kind of clear, thank you.
Okay, I'll try to answer briefly. Yeah, I focused here mainly on Borges essays, but yeah, his short stories are completely crossed by this inquiries, you know? For example, the theme of a double in Borges is an ever-present motive. And what I think it's interesting, and it's something a Brazilian critic called Silvano Santiago has pointed out about Borges, is his preference for this in-between places, you know? It's like he creates sometimes this binary systems, but he chooses to stay in an unstable middle place, you know, where he likes to play, you know? So, in several stories about the other and this image of the self, he always chooses to take this like unstable position, the in-between, how Silvano Santiago calls it. So, maybe that would be like a strategical position or that I would highlight, yeah.
I'm going to call then Patrick Kasha and...
If you want, I mean, I don't know, it's, what time is now? I'm not sure the lunch is going to be ready, because they knew we were late, but let me see.
I think, let me see how it goes, the lunch. We have a short session after lunch.
That's what I think.
Okay, so we're going to do, it's, Eleni Filippo is gonna do her presentation, and then we're going to have a conversation, she's going to do it just from her place, and then we're going to have a conversation about that presentation, and then we'll go for lunch, and we'll do the rest in the afternoon, because we have a shorter session in the afternoon, so, and it's just one, so we can do it a little bit longer. Okay, so I'll leave with you Eleni, who's going to speak about From the Margin to Centre: Translating the Periphery.
As of 2016, there are three international poetry anthologies that deal with the Greek financial crisis. Austerity Measures, Futures, and Crisis. Austerity Measures, edited by Karin Van Dyck, was published by the British arm of Penguin Random House in 2016. Futures was edited by Theodoros Kyotis and was published by Pend in the Margins in 2015. Pend in the Margins is a London-based independent press focused on poetry, experimental fiction, and literary non-fiction. Crisis is the product of Smokestack Books, an independent English poetry press, and edited by Dinos Kyotis. This book was published in 2014. Van Dyck is a prominent academic in modern Greek studies in the United States, while Kyotis and Kyotis are poets active on the Greek literary scene. These anthologies aim to offer a comprehensive picture to international audiences of the Greek poetic landscape during the financial crisis that started in 2008. However, I suggest that the publication of these anthologies by exclusively Anglophone publishing houses and the translations of these Greek poems into English speaks to an uneven power dynamic between minor and dominant languages. These anthologies act as an interesting example of an even linguistic exchange in asymmetrical translation practices. Modern Greek is limited in its dissemination, it's spoken by only about thirteen million speakers and is distributed across Greece and Cyprus, both politically peripheral European states. Greek is not widely translated, it is not one of the ten most translated European languages. Modern Greek's marginalised linguistic status locks into a larger discussion of Greece as a type of colony, as theorised recently by a number of modern Greek scholars. Marco Herzfeld forcefully refers to modern Greece not only as marginalised but as a crypto-colony. For Herzfeld, Greece is only nominally independent, a state with a complicated and sometimes humiliating relationship with twentieth-century Western powers. For Herzfeld, Greece is understood to suffer the social, economic, and political effects of colonialism without formal colonisation. Herzfeld asserts that Greece is somewhat excluded from academic study across various fields that rely on the conceptual and political boundaries and binaries of coloniser versus colonised. In other words, that modern Greek literature does not fit neatly into a post-colonial paradigm and also does not belong to one of the major European traditions of English, French, or German, feeds directly into its exclusion from various epistemologies and disciplines. For many post-colonial literary critics, the act of translating from a minor and marginalised language into a more dominant tongue, most notably English or languages of former colonial powers, has different symbolic resonance depending on the specific languages and their relative political, historical, or social position in the world. On the one hand, as Pascal Casanova notes, the translation of literary works from a minority or marginalised language into a dominant or majority tongue introduces the periphery to the centre. This introduction to the centre consecrates the peripheral and grants such authors a certificate of literary standing. However, on the other hand, translation from a minority or marginalised language into a dominant one can also be read as an act of colonial appropriation, masquerading as creative and cultural engagement. This is particularly true when the target language is a former imperial or colonial language and the source text is a minority or marginalised one, or language of the formerly oppressed or colonised. Indeed, Spivak asserts that translating post-colonial literature sometimes risks perpetuating neocolonial dominance explicitly framed in terms of benevolence toward the representatives of the source language. It is not coincidental, then, that although the poems in these anthologies exist and were written in Greek, none of the anthologies themselves exist in Greek. All three of the anthologies were published by Anglophone publishing houses and then later published in Greece. The publication of these anthologies in the Anglophone metropolitan market confers a literary and aesthetic value upon the texts that renders them worthy of publication in Greece. That international publishing houses rather than Greek ones chose to market the crisis is not because Greek publishing houses have been hard-hit by the economic crisis. Although major publishing houses in Greece have mostly closed down, small publishing houses have actually grown since the crisis. Anglophone publishers are actually a... Anglophone publishers are actually aware of the commercial viability of this type of poetry. The crisis is marketable because English speakers are curious about life under austerity and its effects. And here I have a quote. Can you go? Yep. Here I have a quote by Mark Richards, who's an editor at John Murray Hatchet UK. He explicitly says that British writers are turning to this poetry to hear the stories that English writers are unable to write because they don't know enough or haven't lived through it. Consequently, there is little commercial interest in publishing Greek writers who write outside of the ambit of the crisis or who do not engage in stereotypes of Greekness. Richards acknowledges that there is an element of cultural stereotyping at play in the way that British publishers choose what literature to translate. He states, and I quote, the quote is up there: "In my view, fiction in translation in the UK is often published on less of a literary basis and more on what might be thought of as a reportage one, like Greek novels addressing the economic crisis, for example." End of quote. It's interesting to explore how the translations in these anthologies negotiate the power dynamic between marginalized and dominant languages and whether, while aiming to bring Greece to the world, the editors remain conscious of the possible co-option of Greek voices. Whereas Kyotis is silent about its anthology's translation practices, Kyotis discusses an even power dynamic between languages. Kyotis registers that the movement from Greek into English involves a shift from the local to the global, which may result in a distorted or homogenized image of Greece. Kyotis is alert to the fact that making the text familiar to a global Anglophone audience is problematic and insists on maintaining the poem's foreignness. He intentionally refuses to have a glossary in his books so that readers are forced to look up Greek words. If we can move to the next slide? Oh, no. There you go. Sorry, there. In the introduction to her anthology, Van Dyk reveals that editorial weight has consistently been placed on the strongest translations, even at the expense of some very strong original poems. Van Dyk does not clearly explain what she means by the strongest translations. In PN Review, another publication, it appears that Van Dyk's understanding of the strongest translations are translations that create room for alternative interpretations. However, Van Dyk's use of the word expense is complicated because it gives the impression that the source poems suffer as a result of the English translations. The use of the word expense has the effect of suggesting a lack of sensitivity towards the marginality of Greek within an asymmetrical language landscape. Indeed, Van Dyk's comments in her general introduction... And I've got this quote up. She says, "To recast these Greek poems in the rhythms and multilingual idioms of English with an emphasis on the translated text is to view the crisis cross-culturally and to treat austerity measures as a project as much ours as theirs." End of quote. This statement unwittingly implies less of a balanced two-way exchange or collaboration and more the privileging of the Anglophone translator and translation. Van Dyk emphasizes that in her anthology, the English translations do not aim to replicate the source text. Instead, they aim to engender and create new and different readings in English while remaining conscious of linguistic and cultural differences. She reiterates that translation is a process of loss, that this should not be seen as a source of worry but rather the basis for invention. Van Dyk's sentiments are informed by specific facets of post-structuralist theory, which I will briefly discuss now. Owing to the structural and phonetic differences between languages, the concept that one language can be transparently or unequivocally rendered into another language is false. Even the most faithful translation will be different from the source. Using concepts such as faithfulness or originality is bound to cause problems because the issue of difference in its varying degrees is always present. Taking into account these issues, translation studies since the 1980s has expressed the view that the agency of the translator must be foregrounded, negotiating the source text in terms of the text's possibilities and potential. The translator may play and engage with intellectual and philosophical trajectories of the text and thereby clearly enhance or develop the source text. With the post-structuralist translation, we move away from the idea that translation is a literal rewriting of words from the source language into the target language. We understand that a more interpretive translation can open up the source text's multiple conceptual spaces and geographies. This approach to translation has the potential to be extremely liberating and to be brought into productive dialogue with post-colonial theory. This sort of theory could be used to highlight or emphasize the asymmetry between languages. Done badly, though, post-structuralist translations of a source text from a peripheral language into metropolitan or dominant tongue might suggest a dismissiveness or disregard of the source text. These translations may replace or obscure the voice of the source poet while undermining their literary authority. And here I want us to briefly look at the manner in which one of the poems in Van Dyk's anthology has been translated. And here you have an example of the source poem, which will have read out to us by the poet Jasra Khalid. Okay, so Jasra Khalid is a Greek poet who's also a hip-hop artist. And what you've listened to here is his hip-hop rendition of the poem. That's why it's so fast. Greek is quite a fast language, but that's unnaturally fast. So here we have the translation of the poem by Max Ritvo, who's an American-born translator. He died quite recently. He's a poet. And then on the left-hand side, you have my translation of the poem. So I'll read out my translation, then Ritvo's translation, so you can see the differences in what he's done in his rendering of the poem. So in my, which is quite a literal translation, I've written, "Fuck Armageddon! Rhymes on Messalongi Street, search for cover. Cops invade the occupied building. The same story every evening on repeat. Gaze from on high but fight low. Turn on mega-channel, the police speak with the mouth of pretenders. Sew a knife into the lining, henchmen attack at midday." And then Ritvo's translation: "Fuck Armageddon! The cops get it on, writhing and fucking dead on top of the poems you read in. The poems blush their own blood into Messalongi Street. The poems fullsome plankton, blenderized in the French-kissing moors of the Armageddon Shark policemen, who have their heads so far up their ass the police can't even fit an arm in there. The pretenders, angels of TV, tarry, pretenders who smile and scary. Come visit Messalongi, they murder in broad daylight here. You should be so lucky." Then the second stanza, again in my translation: "Junta, the army in the streets. The children play cops and policemen. In the parliament, the bosses enjoying laws. The workers in the pen work and TV. Glamour and cock, the youth look like bees without a sting. The rebels in jail, wild animals in the cage. And the poets? The poets in silence, billiards without noise." And then Ritvo's translation: "Junta, army in the streets. Toy boots on every collegium of kiddies' feet. Mobsters larding the laws to pure pork fat, no bone, no meat. The labor is sleepily grunting in their pens, doing miley-moahawks and masturbating to the QVCTV gems. Our youth are milk powder when I fucking ask for cane. The rebels are trunged by the Megalodon policemen. The leopards are caged like KFC hens. And the poets? The poets are quiet again. Messalongi Street silent as Danny Boy's Glenn." And then the final stanza, again mine on the left-hand side: "Pretentious poets, stay home, fragile as cyclamens, a life of defeat and defense. Wiped-out left-wingers, bourgeois busybodies. At the slaughter, you disperse like mice from the semina shipwreck. Dead nature, I train words to be fed dain. I'm not writing poetry, I'm writing manifestos. Let's see where you'll be when the blood in the street thickens." And then Ritvo's translation: "Fuck all flower poets. Fragile as your amaryllis. Blinding and bloating yourself with silk, constantly eating and shitting a chrysalis. The doddering lefts is toast with milk, the stinking rats on the sinking semina, who flee too fast to let the cheese curdle. My words are fayadeen, verbal, fatal, fertile. Where will you be when the blood begins to burble?" So I'd like to draw attention to the following points. Certainly, both the source poem and Ritvo's translation invoke a sense of disenchantment towards left-wing poets and the working classes, their failure to respond adequately to pervasive structural and physical violence, both in the form of popular culture and in relation to oppressive state functionaries in the form of the police. However, the second stanza of Ritvo's translation is more urgent and demanding in its critique of capitalism than the source poems. Much like in the source poem, for Ritvo, the working classes have become animals. They grunt and live in pens. Yet Ritvo takes the automatic, mechanical qualities of the workers and contextualizes it, connecting it with the mindless commercialism of capitalism. These animal workers engage in actions in which they emulate the rich and famous. This working-class indulgence in various forms of capitalism is then followed by the poem's speaker lamenting how insipid and apolitical the youth are. Ritvo's translation, though, potentially obscures the voice of the source poet and could imply an indifference towards Greece's crypto-colonial or peripheral status and the imbalance of power between marginal and dominant languages. It contains images of largely American capitalism that do not exist in the source poem, miley-racchisiras, QVCTV, and KFC. It also translates the bosses of the source poem into exploitative mobsters. Although references to the Greek War of Independence have been maintained, the reference to Messalongi, popular references to contemporary Greece have been expunged. The reference to Pretenders, a TV news anchor, has morphed into the Pretenders. So in closing, I'd like to say that editors, translators, publishers, and writers involved in the production and sale of poetry of the financial crisis for an Anglophone market benefit from the construction and dissemination of this new literary category, be it financially or in terms of acquiring or consolidating cultural capital. It's not entirely clear if all these actors are conscious of the inequality and power dynamics at play between marginalized and dominant languages. Certainly, in the context of the Greek financial crisis, post-structuralist translation can be a way of engaging with the poetry of the crisis, but it demands a political and ethical sensitivity and awareness that might not always be achieved. Thank you. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them briefly before we meet for lunch. Yes?
My question is maybe relating a bit to what Heidi did on the presentation on extreme translation. Like, how would you assess an extreme translation, like the liberties they take with the one that he... Let's say, he adopted it in the American context. Like, you talk about cultural appropriation, indeed, but... Do you understand my question?
I mean, I'm not unsympathetic to what Adriana terms extreme translation or that I refer to as a sort of post-structuralist translation here. In fact, I think, and I mentioned this in the talk, I think it can do very productive and interesting things. I think I'm just slightly wary of where... And I brought this up with Adriana the other day. It can be a bit gimmicky or can feature as a form of cultural appropriation. But there are times where it can do things that I think the source poet might have actually missed or not realized, where they could push their text further or do more interesting things or be more critical. So I'm not discounting that it's a productive way of translating.
Yeah.
So you mentioned that most of these anthologies, actually, I think all of them were primarily published for the English-speaking market. And I wonder if these poets as well, whether they had been previously published in Greece or whether they prepared some of these poems specially for these publications? Because it seems to me that it might be also dealing with the case of auto-exoticism in some ways. Because maybe these Greek poets themselves wanted to be marketed as these, you know, poets of the financial crisis. And then maybe they really collaborated. Maybe they actually wanted the translators to sort of appropriate the voices. So my question is about where the poems were drawn from and whether there was some, yeah, a case of like kind of self-orientalizing and kind of knowing that the audience, the target audience, would be interested in these kind of themes. And actually, I like "The Blood Begins to Burble." It's a nicer one than the original.
So the poems feature in different spaces. So in Van Dyk's anthology specifically, she's picking up poems from blogs. She's using hip-hop and sort of translating, and using that as poetry, saying that hip-hop is also a form of poetry and integrating that into her book. So the poems are driven, are taken from and drawn from various different sort of publications and online forums. What happened was that when this poetry started becoming commercially viable and noticed by the Anglophone literary sphere, poets started writing specifically in the hope that they'll be noticed by international markets. So what initially was a very organic movement, where people were simply just responding to their daily reality, to being hard-pressed economically, once the international market started picking up on them as poets and started featuring them in places like the New York Review of Books and in The Guardian and various online newspapers, then suddenly you saw generating a sort of artificial market where people were writing specifically so that they can be noticed by the international world.
Yeah.
So yes, I mean, it is a level of auto-exoticism. Yeah?
Just a matter of a point of information. So can you give us the dates again? Could you go back to the first slide? The dates of the anthologies, particularly in terms of what you just said? Because I'm just wondering about the kind of...
So Crisis was 2014. That was the very, very first one and probably the least well-known. Austerity Measures was 2016? Let me just check. And then Futures was 2015. So Austerity Measures is the most recent. And the most well-known because Karin van Dyk is very well-known in the US and she has a lot of connections.
So would you hazard some sort of narrative or some sort of claim about the developmental narrative behind these anthologies? In response to these marketing questions that you were just addressing?
Well, they were all aware of each other. So Kyotis is, he's the project manager of the Cavafi Archive in Athens. And he was doing his D-fold at Oxford with Peter McRidge, who knows Van Dyk. So they all sort of know each other. There is a sort of academic network. So Kyotis is also an academic. And most of the poets that feature in Futures also feature in Austerity Measures. So there is that dialogue and recycling that's going on. Crisis is a little bit different because the editor of that anthology also runs a poetry journal in Athens. And he was commissioning certain poets that he knew to actually write poems that he felt would be useful in his anthology, but then also picking up poems that he had published previously and putting them into the anthology. But he also has an American link in that he spent half of his year in San Francisco and then the other half of his year as the director of a literary festival on one of the Greek islands. But these circles are so small that everyone sort of knows each other. And modern Greek studies as an academic discipline is very small. And the people that translate a lot of modern Greek literature are also people that are academics in primarily US universities. Any other questions? Okay, I think in that case, we could probably break for lunch, right?
Break for lunch. Let's meet then back at 3:00.
Yeah.
Inside the room. We have more or less an hour and a half for lunch.
Okay, great.